Hello, everyone, and welcome to another edition of the Ask Bill Keegan Show. I'm your host, Bill Keegan, town manager here in Foxborough. Here with me today are Assistant Town Manager Mike Johns and Bonnie Overett, the chairman of the Zoning Board of Appeals, member of the Economic Development Committee, and also a member of the Billboard Advisory Committee. So, thank you, and thanks for both of you for being here today. Bonnie, you wear many hats, so I appreciate all the work that you do and offer the services that you do to the town.
My pleasure.
And you do a great job.
I appreciate the invitation.
No, thanks for being here. So Bonnie's going to be our zoning and by law, and also billboard person for today because he's worked on these items throughout the course of the past year, and has been an integral part of those changes that are being proposed. And so today's purpose of today's meeting is to sort of just go over the town meeting warrant, provide input and answers, and sort of direction for the town meeting voters who will be asked to prepare, to come to the meeting on next, the 13th, which is a week from today. Today being, of course, Election Day here in Foxborough, while there was many controversial elections today because there are no real, actual challenged seats, so to speak. But certainly, we want to follow up with the annual town meeting, which is going to be a week from today, and will be starting at 7:30 at the high school. So we certainly welcome everyone to attend that meeting and to exercise your democratic right to work as the legislative body of this community. So without further ado, I'd like to start going through the warrant. There are a total of 26 articles that are going to be considered for the town meeting this year. The first is, the first three are the annual items that we go over, and they are the town elections results, the two is the annual town reports, and three is the reports of committees. The annual town reports are going to be available. They are available, they came in, they were published just a few weeks ago, so they are available, and we'll be handing them out at the town meeting. Also, on the town elections, the results of today's election will certainly be available for everyone to see. And the reports of committees, I'm not aware of any committee, though we may see some report from the Borough School Committee. I haven't heard that officially, but I'm told that that may be a possibility. So turning now to the operating budget, which is, which this year will draw a lot more discussion than it has in the past, primarily because there's been a difference in what has been recommended by the advisory committee versus what has been proposed through both the town manager and the Board of Selectmen. It's not uncommon to see some differences, but I think there are actually a number of differences this year, and certainly within the power and the authority of the advisory committee to recommend something different. However, the administration, me and myself, Mike, and the department heads have gone through a long process to determine what we think is the right spending plan for the town, and so we've come up with a plan, which we presented to the Selectmen, and the Selectmen, by and large, agreed with the plan that we have proposed. And that's the plan that we will ask for consideration, certainly some amendments that have been proposed, since the advisory committee's budget is the one that's on the floor. So I think that's important for people to know, that the advisory committee recommendations are the ones that are actually the ones that are on the floor for consideration first. It will be up to the town to propose amendments to that budget as we proceed forward. So I'd like to just give everybody a heads up as to what some of those changes are. There are a total of, I believe, 10 different budgets that are being considered, though there are actually a total of 12 total changes, because there are two categories within a couple of budgets that will be looked at for consideration. So the first in that is the, in that budget is item, line item 123, which is administration. The advisory committee has recommended an amount of $481,0291. The town, the Selectmen and administration are recommending an amount of $26,500 more for a new total of $507,791. And that is the original amount that had been recommended by the administration and by the Selectmen back several months ago. The second, and Second Amendment will be to lower the amount in the municipal buildings' salaries, excuse me, by $213. That was noted as a scribbler's error, so we will just, we will actually address that, and then we will correct that accordingly. So we do agree with the recommendation of the 200, of the lower amount of $213. Turning to line item 210, there'll be a motion to amend that, to increase that line item from, in line item 210, in the salaries line by $50,538, from $4,054,953 to $4,105,191. And that is an amount that has been increased, and that primarily attributes, is attributed to overtime. It was a cut that was made by the advisory committee, but what most people may not be aware of is that, is that, well, I had already cut that budget, the original proposed budget by the Police Department, by $60,000. So this, if left in place, that would amount to a $110,000 cut, which, from the original amount that was requested. So I think that's, I think the $50,538 to be restored is an appropriate measure, given that circumstance. The next one is the move to increase the budget line item in the, in line item 210, which is, this is one of those items that has two items in it, and is in the capital outlay line from, to, by $56,720. The advisory committee recommended funding only of three cruises, and we are recommending that it be funded for four cruises to try and keep pace with the amount of rotation of the vehicles that comes out every year. And so that seems to be the right number, and so we're recommending that amount be included, $56,720 more, to a new total of $226,880. The next one is line item 220, which is the Fire Department, and there's a look, we're looking to increase the salary line by $116,468 to, from the original, from the amount being recommended by the advisory committee of $3,377,779, to the new total of $3,494,247. And this amount was for the, for the funding of the existing deputy chief position, Fire Deputy Chief, and that was a position that was, had been vacated when, when new chief, Mike Kellerherd, was promoted to the position of Fire Chief. So this, that position is currently vacant, but there is, there has been a movement within the department to actually backfill positions, and the promotion of the new deputy chief has not occurred yet, but it was expected, was expected to occur in the next, next several weeks. So this would restore that position, so that the complement would stay the same as it currently is. Just to be clear, that, that position of deputy chief is not a new position, it's one that was currently existing within the department. The second one, the next one is to increase budget line item 220, under the Fire Capital Outlay, by $44,000, from, from zero to $44,000. Excuse me. What had happened in that line is that I actually made a reduction earlier in the year, because we would, I was trying to balance everything out, and I had no, I did not have an indication as to where our total revenue picture was at that point. So I actually took a conservative position and cut out some of the capital items, reduced some of the capital items to make sure that I could then go back and look at it later on, which I did, and then realized that we had actually saved considerable money in other lines, particularly health insurance, and this year. So we were able to restore some of those cuts that had been originally proposed. The $44,000 is for capital consideration, for new hoses, safety equipment for the Fire Department, and for new gear, new gear that we typically rotate out every single year. So that amount of $44,000 would then, would increase from zero to $44,000, the capital line item for, 220 Fire, Fire Line. And then moving on to, to line item 235, Joint Public Safety, capital outlay was then, was increased from, by $17,000, proposed to be increased by $17,000, from $24,440 to $44,440. And again, that falls into the same category of original cut, but then restored. That was for capital improvements within the Public Safety Building that are being proposed to improve the conditions of the building. It's been 10 years, some of the rooms need to be refreshedened, new carpet and painting that's needed in the building, some furniture needs to be fixed that has been broken. It's been over 10 years, so it's not uncommon to see some, some things ready to be, ready to be renewed. So that'd be a $17,000 increase over the recommended $24,440 from the advisory committee. The next one is line item 410, Public Works, in the capital improvement here, again, going from $7,500, increasing to $7,500 from zero, and that's, and $7,500 was for a mechanic's, for a mechanic's lift, that was, that was, vehicle lift, that was, that was, again, removed, but then later restored. On this particular item, all the ones that I just recommended to, or indicated to you had been recommended by the Board of Selectmen. On this one item, though, there was a tie in the vote, been on the Selectmen, because there was only four members present at the night that vote was taken. We do expect that the Board will reconvene prior to the town meeting and see if they change their position on this. If the vote goes any differently, we'll certainly report that out at the town meeting itself. Right now, there was, it's a tie, so there is no action. The recommendation from the advisory committee was zero, the original recommendation of the town manager was $7,500, and then, and then changed to, or actually restored the So we'll see where that actual action takes prior to the town meeting. The next one is to look at line item 423, Snow and Ice, and that was a capital outlay of $11,000, and that's, we're looking to restore that amount from zero, and that's for a new plow that we buy, we buy a new plow every single year. This one, again, was something that we had to trim prior to the final budget, and then later was, is restored. This one's important, though, because it was later determined that we cannot really reduce that amount, this amount for this budget, because otherwise it will impact our ability to actually pay beyond the amount every year that we can raise for major snow events. So we cannot, we can't reduce it, we can, we can increase that amount, but we can't reduce it according to, there's a statutory provision, which I was unaware of, would normally be picked up by the, by the finance team, but unfortunately, as we went through this year, we had a sort of limited team this year with the departure of our Finance Director. So that being the case, we're looking to restore that amount of $11,000. And then, a motion to amend would be for $450,000, Water Enterprise salaries of $44,000, from the, from $1,602,935, $1,602,935 to $1,647,435, and that's for a, that would be to restore a position, to put money in for a position within the Fire, the Water Department, Water and Sewer Department, for some administrative support. There was a case made by the department to support this position, based upon the amount of transactions that are occurring in that department, and there's no backup to many, to several of the functions that go on there. This was proposed and was supported by the Board of Selectmen as well, and so that increase would be by $44,500. And then, and then I believe, the next one was 610, and it was for the Library Capital Outlay of $3,000 for technology improvements. That was from zero to $3,000, again, and that vote was, again, tied by the Board of Selectmen, again, to be revisited by the town, by the Board prior to town meeting. So at this point, my recommendation was for $3,000 to be restored. I'm hoping that that will be reconsidered by both the Board of Selectmen and the, and the Library Commission, which I think will address this at town meeting as well. And then also, one thing we did agree on, there was, there was a move to reduce the amount of money for the, for the health insurance account, further than what had already been increased, it actually didn't come in nearly as much as we thought this year, but there was an attempt to try and reduce it by $48,000. I'm recommending that we, that we reduce it, that we increase it by a total of $33,000, so a portion of the reduction proposed by the advisory committee is agreed, is agreed upon by the administration and by the Board of Selectmen. Board of Selectmen have agreed to support the amount of $33,000 to be restored to the line, which would, which would take it from 8.6 million, 8 million 610,906 to 8 million 643,906. And so that covers the amount of changes that we will see. I fully expect there'll be some discussion about a lot of those items, because there are different opinions about where things should be, but I thoroughly expect that there'll be a good amount of discussion and debate, and hopefully we'll get to some resolution of those items. And then going next to, I'm going to turn to, and depending upon what comes out of the budget, by the way, that will, will depend upon what advisory or what recommendation will be for the total budget. So we can't get into that discussion until we know what the final number will be, and so we'll be doing some, some, some calculations in current time, real time, as we, as we go through this process. We have a couple ideas, but we certainly want to make sure that we have the right number when we, when we sit down and finalize everything, based upon the votes that are taken. So the next item, next article from consideration is Article 5, which is the Capital Improvement Program. There is, there were several items, and there was no agreement, disagreement by any side on this one, both the advisory committee, the Selectmen, the administration, all agree on the, on the Capital Improvement Program. And the, and the, and the items are as follows. For Information Systems, there is $175,000 that is being proposed, and that will be funded through free cash. Municipal Buildings, there is a $50,000 amount that is going to be used to help with common improvement, town common improvements, and that's going to come from mitigation funds. The Joint Public Safety Building, there'll be $150,000 for security cameras and for new technology in that area, and that's going to come from free cash. Public Schools will have a number of technology improvements that they do on an ongoing basis for $390,000, and that will come from free cash. Recreation Commission is looking for a new, a new swing, swing set and playground area for the IGO, I'm sorry, Booth Playground, and that amount is for $85,213. The Historical Commission is looking for $25,000 for, help me out with that, Mike, that was the, for the...
I think it was Memorial Hall, but I don't, oh, no, I'm sorry, that was for the restoration of the historical markers.
Yes, historical markers, okay. So that's correct, at the cemeteries. So, so thank you for clarifying that. And there was quite a bit of discussion about that at the meeting, at the advisory committee meeting, I'm sorry, the, the, Capital CIP meeting about that, and did a nice job of convincing everybody that was a good thing to do. In Highway, there's $159,000 for new equipment purchases from free cash. Highway Chapter 90, for, there's $650,000 that we're getting from the state to help pay for some road improvements. In Highway, also Roads, there was $238,777 being proposed, coming from meals tax, that will help with that, with those road improvements as well. In Water Enterprise, those are for various water, water improvements and equipment improvements, and that's a million, that's 1.394,000 that's proposed to be used from water receipts. Sewer receipts, another amount of $240,000, again, for sewer improvements throughout, throughout the town. Total Capital Improvement Program for this year slates, is slated at $3,556,990, and that, again, has been approved by all of the other various boards, and there was no disagreement over those numbers. So that is a good thing, and I don't expect there'll be a lot of questions about that, but if certainly if there are, we will certainly be there to respond to anybody who has any questions about those. All right, so turning to Article 6, Article 6, 7, and 8 are all collective bargaining contracts, and I'm going to turn it over to you, Mike, to, to give those explanations.
Okay, great, thank you, Bill. So the Town of Foxborough and the Foxborough Permanent Firefighters Association, Local 2252, have agreed to and settled a new contract, you know, for the, for the firefighters. And the amount to settle that contract for FY19 and '20 is the amount that'll be voted on in Article 6. That amount is $207,559. For Article 7, that is a contract that was settled between the, the Foxborough Public Safety Dispatches Association, Mass. Cop Local 440, FLCIO, and the Town of Foxborough, and that, again, is, is funded for FY19 and FY20, for the total amount of $40,412.
It's important to point out that this is the final contract for that group, as that group will no longer be in existence after, after July 1. There is a, a, a final payment that's due, that'd be paid in FY20, for, for those final dispatchers who've been retained through the, at the, to the end of this fiscal year, and is, for staying on board during the transitional phase. So, but the FY2019 is for, is for an increase that goes back to July 1st.
Correct. And thank you for pointing that out, because that is important, because one of the things that we were concerned about as we, as we moved to a new 911 system, is retaining the people through July 1st that would be going through a transition, either, either applying to Semrec or, or some other entity, so we were very interested. In fact, we needed to retain those folks to maintain our dispatch 911 services. So that payment is in FY20, but the salaries for those folks do not go through FY20.
Correct.
Article 8 is for the Library Contract, which the Town of Foxborough and the Boyd &amp; Library Employees Association have come to an agreement and settled, and again, this is for settling FY19 back to last July 1st, and going through next July 1st FY20, and the amount for that contract in Article 8 is $70,209. Article 9 is authorizing the annual spending limits for the town's revolving funds pursuant to MGL Chapter 44, and those, those amounts are similar to what you've seen in the past. For the Recreation Revolving Fund, it's $375,000, and that's for FY20. For Police and Fire Apparatus Utilization Revolving Fund, it's $100,000. For the Highway Department Revolving Fund, it's $40,000. And the last one is the Council on Aging Senior Trips and Programs Fund, for a total of $60,000. And those are funds that are raised through those departments and, and used back into the programs or equipment as appropriate for those four different areas.
So effectively, the money gets raised, but then it can be used within the same fiscal year for expenditure, based on the fact that they've been raised for those specific programs.
Correct.
Okay, great. All right, so moving to Article 10, the Fund Qualified OPEP Trust, this is, again, an annual motion that, or action that's taken by the town to fund its post-employment benefit liability. And so what we do each year is we come up with an amount based upon an estimate from, from an actuary, as to what would be needed to help keep that fund, trust funded properly, and, and so, and we're taking care of a future liability by doing it this way, and most communities don't have this, but it's something that is highly recommended, and also is part of the reason why we have AAA bond ratings, because we've taken care of our future obligations. And by having this, this fund in place, it's actually something that's, that's, that's thought of really highly by, by the, by the bond, by the bond, bond agencies. So this amount that we're looking for is $964,069, and several years ago, the town committed to this fund obligation by taking a portion of its meals funds and putting that towards that, and also getting funds from, from the Water and Sewer Funds as well to help pay for that anticipated obligation. This year, the number of $964,069 will be used to be funded, and $900,000 will come from the meals tax receipts, $51,256 will come from the Water Enterprise receipts, and $12,813, excuse me, $12,813 from the Sewer Enterprise receipts. So for that total of $964,069. Again, this is something that we do annually, and it's, it's not, not really controversial, it's just something that we do as a matter of our obligations. Moving to Article 11, this is a, an action to add additional money to our stabilization fund, something that we do as part of our overall financial policies, and so we're looking to fund an additional $100,000 into the stabilization fund, and again, that has been recommended and approved by all Boards and Committees. Mike?
So Article 12, this is for, to vote for transfer of free cash amounts for, for prior year bills, and the total amount of this is $52,057, and these are all deductibles from our insurance company that have come in for prior settlements. So these are cases that are years past, but they've come due, so there are a total of eight deductibles, most of them at $7,500, for, actually, half of them, and the other half are at $4,518 each. And then one bill, which is a, after applying credits from National Grid, which is $3,985. So again, the total amount of this motion is to, for Article 12, is to pay unpaid bills of $52,057.
So just to, and add some added information about the National Grid item, that was something that the town went forward to do some improvement of its LED lighting initiative, which would, would put new LEDs on all of our streetlights. We've completed the project, but what happened was then there was a credit that was due to the town, and the credit, between the credit and the, and the billing cycles that National Grid had was actually off-cycle, so, which resulted in a net additional cost to the town, to the town that we had to address, and so that's why that amount is here as a, as a bill of prior year. So that, it's not something we could, we had any control over. And the, and the other cases, the deductibles, we were, the case is settled, so we weren't in a position to pay it until the, until the case had actually settled, and it turned into a different fiscal year than that, which we could actually pay those deductibles. So we, so we now have to treat them as bills of prior year. Okay. All right, so Article 13, Mike?
So this, this article relates to the Borough School, and it is, it's quite simply, the, it's for the amount of $64,000. So it's a, it's a motion for the town to appropriate $64,000 for the purpose of paying the cost of renovation in addition to the Borough School. This is not an additional amount of money for the total amount that's already been approved for this project. This is simply a math error, where the $64,000 was counted twice previously. So the town needs to move that that $64,000 be paid in this budget, so that the MSBA, or the, you know, the, the funding source that's paying a little over half of this entire project will, will fund this, and that's what Article 13 pertains to.
All right, so it's simply, you know, a correction of a minor math error to, to correct the situation for the MSBA. Article 23 is, and, well, I'm going to, I'm going to hold off there, and actually turn to the articles dealing with mostly the signed bylaws, the parking bylaw, and, Mike, do you want to just take 14, if you would?
Sure. Article 14 is, that's, is that the parking?
That's the parking, right.
Okay, so this one, give you a little bit of background, so somebody parks in a, in a handicap spot, and they get a $300 ticket. Often these are justified, sometimes someone just doesn't have their placard up, or it's not showing in the correct manner. So if it's upside down, the enforcement officers, you know, can't see that the person parking there is actually the owner of that tag. They get a $300 ticket. This article would move that the, the ticket can then be reduced to a smaller amount, and I believe it's $25, if the person can come into the Police Department, show that they have an authorized placard to park in a handicap spot. So that's basically what that is. It's a, you know, the, 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 people shouldn't be parking in handicap spots if they're not authorized, but we don't, we don't want to be overly penalizing someone if they are authorized but just don't have their tag correctly displayed. And hopefully, this will also create awareness that people do need to put their, their tag up on their, their rearview mirror, so that it can be seen and, you know, and enforced.
So it's actually $20, it's not $25.
Oh, $20, okay.
Fair enough. So, so that's, yeah, it actually allows us to actually take that action, which is currently, there would be no, no ability to actually reduce it beyond, to, based upon the current language.
Correct.
So, okay. Very good. All right, so turning to Article 15, which is to amend the article, amend the signed the article, amend the signed bylaw. I'm going to turn it to Bonnie and ask us if you could, ask him if he could actually help us with the explanation of that.
Thank you. So Articles 15, 16, and 17 deal with amendments to the town's signed bylaw. And just a little bit of history. In the latter part of 2013, early 2014, the Board of Selectmen established the Billboard Advisory Committee. And the purpose of the committee, the objective of the committee was to advise the town as to the issue of billboards, electronic billboards. Committee fairly early on decided, determined that the current signed bylaw was in need of elimination, that it was antiquated, it was confusing, because it had at one point in time been part of the zoning bylaw. It utilized zoning terms that had no real relevance to, to signs. So what we did was we retained a consultant and we developed a new signed bylaw, which was approved by special town meeting in 2014. And at the time, we knew that over a course of time, as the signed bylaw was implemented, as the building commissioner and the Board of Appeals became familiar with it, that improvements would be, would be necessary. In fact, in the report that we presented to town meeting at that particular point in time, we said that this was a work in progress, that, that new situations would arise, improvements would be necessary, and at some point in time, we would go back to town meeting to, to address those kinds of matters. That's what Article 15 does. It addresses issues that the building commissioner has dealt with since 2014. It addresses issues that the Board of Appeals has dealt with since 2014. It makes improvements to the bylaw. It adds some clarity to the bylaw. It adds some specificity to the bylaw. There are 16 separate recommendations, proposed amendments in, in Article 15. But again, all they are really doing is making adjustments and improvement to the, to the bylaw itself. And let me give you just a couple of small examples. We determined that, initially, we, we determined that it was appropriate to, to impose a 60-day appeal period if the, if the Board of Appeals had approved a, a signed permit. And the building commissioner pointed out to us that 60 days was, was excessive. On a zoning matter, the appeal period is only 20 days. My understanding on a determination of the building commissioner, it's only 30 days. So we've reduced that to, to 30 days. A second example is the bylaw provides provisions relative to the modification or the alteration of signs. There's no wording whatsoever in the bylaw about replacement of signs. The Board of Appeals has taken the position that a, that a replacement of a sign is the same as a modification or an alteration. But we feel that it's appropriate for an applicant, it's appropriate for townspeople, it's appropriate for future Board of Appeals members to demonstrate that a replacement, that a new sign, that replacing an existing sign with a new sign should be specified in the bylaw. So therefore, there are a couple of provisions where we've added the word replacement. So essentially, that's what Article 15, 15 does.
So it's a cleanup.
It's a cleanup. I look at it as a, as an improvement, as adding clarity and specificity.
So this, that's not uncommon. Is, is I, have I seen it? And I think you've seen it as well, Bonnie, that over the years, the practitioners that actually utilize these bylaws will identify certain things that are flaws as you actually, in, in situations evolve. And sometimes they know, they may, it may take several years before they evolve into something that's real. And then when you go back and start to apply the, the bylaw, you realize that, you know, maybe that was that really our intent to do that. And so that gets clarified and that's why it gets brought forward.
Right. In a sense, every, every one of these provisions is substantive in its own nature, but we're not creating any new sign. We're not taking away from a sign.
Right.
We're not creating any new procedure or process, but it's just clarifying, specifying, improving, adjusting.
All right. Thank you. So Article 16?
Article 16. So again, when we first met several years ago, the Billboard Advisory Committee, the intent was to address the issue of billboards, in particular whether electronic billboards were, were warranted. The initial drafts of what is now the signed bylaw did provide for electronic billboards only on Route 1. We ran into some opposition from the, the advisory committee relative to those provisions. After further discussion, we decided to strip out from the provisions of the bylaw, the bylaw that actually was considered at town meeting in 2014, all of the provisions relative to electronic billboards. After town meeting, the subsequent summer, we did a, a survey, an anonymous survey. And the results were relatively favorable as far as electronic billboards on Route 1. Yes, there were a lot of people who were opposed to it. There were different gradations as to what people liked or didn't like about electronic billboards. But it prompted us to say that at some point in time, we would go back to town meeting and address the issue of electronic billboards. We thought about doing it last year with all of the other changes that we were doing relative to Route 1 zoning. Felt that it was inappropriate at that time because of the complexity of those provisions. But we do feel that now is the time to present to town meeting and let town meeting decide whether electronic billboards on Route 1 are or are not appropriate. So essentially, what you see in Article 16 with one major exception is putting back into the bylaw the provisions that we had taken out in 2014. And that one major exception is there is a requirement of mitigation. In other words, if the Board of Appeals approves, were to approve, a request for an electronic billboard, a condition of that approval would be that the applicant would have to go to the Board of Selectmen and negotiate and execute a contract for mitigation. And we have left what mitigation is to the discretion and flexibility of the Board of Appeals. I'm sorry, of the Board of Selectmen. So that is the major difference between what we were discussing several years ago and what town meeting we'll see next week.
And to be clear, that the, this provision only applies to billboards located on Route 1. Is that correct?
That's correct. We, we, we will not allow billboards anyplace in town. In fact, billboards are not allowed right now anyplace in town other than Route 1. We will not allow electronic billboards if the, if the proposal is approved anyplace but Route, Route 1. I want to make clear that there are restrictions in state law, restrictions in the bylaw relative to electronic billboards. They govern the intensity of lighting. They do not allow flashing signs. They do not allow intermittent signs. There is, there are protections that are built into state law. There are protections that will be built into the bylaw relative to electronic billboards. And the one thing I would like those who come to town meeting next week, and hopefully everybody who's registered to vote will come to town meeting next week. But the one thing I would like people to do is to say, to forget their biases, forget any negative thoughts they may have relative to billboards, and say to themselves, the town already allows billboards on Route 1. There are 13 of them. All we're proposing is to allow electronic billboards. The Billboard Advisory Committee has determined that the maximum number we can have electronic-wise on Route 1 would be six. We believe that because of the distance that's required between electronic billboards and static billboards, because of the cost that's involved in installing electronic billboard, we would have fewer than that number. And ideally, we'd have some conversion of existing static billboards to electronic billboards. With the mitigation, mitigation provision, I just want the participants at town meeting next week to determine what is best for Foxborough. Are we best with the status quo, which is to allow static billboards? Or are we best with allowing electronic billboards where the town can obviously obtain some, something in the way of mitigation, more likely than not, some kind of monetary mitigation?
Right. Okay. Well, I think that's, you know, that's a really good summary of the issue because that's something that's affecting most communities in Massachusetts today, is this issue or this notion of electronic versus static. And there are some folks who feel very strongly about, about electronic billboards, but the reality is, is that that seems, that's the wave of the future. And, and what's interesting about that is that it's actually much more efficient for billboard companies to have the electronic ones because they're not up there changing them, physically changing them on a regular basis. And moreover, the, you, you can put more ads up on those, obviously, and they're more, more functional and more, and generate more revenue by doing it that way as well. So it's good to have the, the provision that allows for mitigation because I think the mitigation piece is, is helpful for the town. At the same time, it's, it's a little bit neater in terms of the, the look of the board. They're effectively just large LED screens.
Correct.
The controversy is, of course, that, you know, they, they do change and are they distracting, that, that type of thing. And there's different schools of thought on that, as we know. So, but, but they are clearly the wave of the future. And so I think it's important that, that the community decides what it wants. And I think that's why we're, we're proposing it, putting it forward. And I appreciate the work, all the work that the Billboard Advisory Committee has done on this issue.
Now, we, we certainly recognize that they're distracting, but static billboards are also distracting. And again, what, what is best for Foxborough? What is in the best interest of the town? And our committee has decided that to allow electronic billboards would better serve the interests of the town than the, you know, the status quo.
Fair enough.
Tony, could you just review, if an applicant was to come in wanting to put up an electronic billboard or convert a static to electronic, what, what are the different boards, you know, that they would go in front of, you know, the decision makers?
So the principal decision maker from a town standpoint would be the Board of Appeals, because we would have to issue a special signed permit in order to allow it. But again, that would be conditioned on a mitigation agreement between the applicant and the Board of Selectmen. And ultimately, if all of that comes to pass, the applicant then has to go to the outdoor advertising, the, the Office of Outdoor Advertising, which is an office within the State's Department of Transportation, to obtain a license from, from that particular entity. And again, they establish certain regulations that dictate what can and cannot be done, what is and what is not allowed, relative to distance, relative to the ambient lighting, relative to intensity, things of that nature.
So this, so if this article were to pass, this is clearly not a cut planche. They've got three different processes to go through.
It's a highly regulated field.
Right, okay.
On several levels, both the local and at the state level.
Thank you, Tony. So again, if, if it were to pass, we're, we're not saying that if, if it passes next week, that all of a sudden, the next day, there are going to be electronic billboards.
Right.
We, we still have to have the Attorney General's approval of the article. And then, of course, an applicant would have to go to the, to the Board of Appeals. Thank you.
Very good. Thank you. Article 17 is the citizen petition to amend the bylaw?
So what Article 17 would do would allow a nonprofit entity that's a place of assembly, the principal purpose of which is the performance and display of cultural events and the arts, to obtain a special signed permit from the Board of Appeals, to have an electronic sign that would essentially advertise the events that are occurring at that particular location. Last summer, the Rodman Center came to the Board of Appeals and was applying for a permit to replace their current sign, the sign that's on the wall, with a, an electronic sign. And because electronic signs are prohibited in the downtown sign district, we obviously could not, could not approve that. So this particular bylaw, though, it would apply to entities other than, or conceivably applied to entities other than the Rodman Center, is being promoted by the, the folks at the Rodman Center. And again, it would allow them, if approved by town meeting, to come to the Board of Appeals to obtain a special signed permit for that, for that sign.
So again, this would not be a case where it would be automatically approved based on, by virtue of this bylaw, but it would allow the ability for it to be considered?
That's correct.
And that's really the main difference.
Correct. And again, as, as in any special signed permit that the Board of Appeals considers and approves, we have authority to impose appropriate conditions. So we certainly could impose conditions relative to the intensity of lighting. We could impose conditions relative to hours of operation. That would all be dependent on the, the members of the board.
Thanks for clarifying that one. So how about miscellaneous zoning under Article 18?
This is really a, sort of a housekeeping item. There are four components to this. A couple of them, one of them deals with just renumbering sections. One of them is deleting a, a note in a table of uses and, and then renumbering notes. The only aspect of any substance here is the, the first component of the article, which is to delete a couple of provisions that relate to planned developments in the S1 district. Last year at town meeting, we eliminated the provisions in the bylaw relative to planned developments in the S1 district. We overlooked these two provisions. So this is really just clarifying that or cleaning that, that oversight up.
Very good. All right. Let's turn to Article 19. See if the town will vote to amend the amendments, or table use amendments.
So Article 19 makes, or proposes four amendments to the, to the town's table of the uses. The table of the uses is a provision within the zoning bylaw that establishes the various uses of, of property that are or are not permitted, permitted in, in the various districts that we've established. The first item essentially allows business entities that are already permitted to engage in assembly of products, bottling, bottling of products, manufacturing of products, to also engage in the incidental sale of those products on site. The second item is deleting the word arcade uses from use designation C5. The reason we're eliminating those words or deleting those words is, is the fact that arcades are dealt with in a different section of the, of the bylaw. So we're dealing with an inconsistency there and eliminating the inconsistency. The third component is to add the word medical to the use that deals with registered marijuana dispensaries. By adding the word medical, and this was recommended by the Attorney General, we're, we're distinguishing between medical marijuana dispensaries and those that are for recreational use. And let me be clear that we're not permitting recreational sales of marijuana within the town.
That was something that the town has actually decided that they did not want to support.
That's correct. And the, the fourth item is to also deal with a, an inconsistency and, and to address a clarification. There are two provisions in the bylaw that currently allow, or currently deal with the, the sale of used and pre-owned motor vehicles. One of them does not allow it at all in town. And that's where land and buildings are primarily used for the sale of pre-owned or used motor vehicles. And that provision is not being changed. It does not allow the sale, the primary sale of, of used motor vehicles anyplace in town. The second provision allows for the accessory sale, or the accessory use of property for the sale of used and motor vehicles. That's allowed in four different districts within the town, subject to a special permit from the planning board. So what we're doing is moving that provision, provision from, from a section in the table of uses that deals with miscellaneous provisions to the section that deals with accessory uses and modifying the definition so it's a little bit clearer.
Great. Thank you. So now turning to, to Article 20, amendments to the retail use language.
So last year, when we were considering the various provisions relative to, to Route 1 zoning that were approved at town meeting, we, we realized that in the table of uses, there are two uses that are almost identical. One is mercantile retail and the second is retail establishment. Retail establishment is defined in the bylaw, mercantile retail isn't. We considered last year deleting the mercantile retail use, but felt that we had enough on our plate, enough for town meeting to consider, that we would address the, the issue at a subsequent time. So what we've done is go through the bylaw, determine where mercantile retail was used, determine where retail was used or retail use was used, and have eliminated those provisions with the attempt to add some clarity, add some specificity, just by using the, the phrase retail establishment. So there's nothing substantive here in the sense we're not adding anything. There's nothing new. We're just deleting a term that has existed for a number of years, but is really the same as another term that's a little bit clearer.
So again, it's just more developing consistency in the language.
That's correct. It's more adjustment, more.
Right. Excellent. All right. That's really helpful. So then getting to, last but not least, in terms of the zoning types of amendments, is the, is amendments the as-built plan?
So all, all this is requiring is site plan review, or adding a provision to the bylaw that specifies whether there is an as-built plan on a commercial, a commercial development, a site plan. There is also going to be a site plan review process that the planning board will go through. And this establishes the criteria of that.
Great. All right. And then turning to Article 22, it's to accept Shea Lane as a public way. So Shea Lane has met all the requirements. We typically will wait to the very last week before, so we'll, we'll know for certain this week if there's any, anything that deviates from, from the recommendation. But this, the Department of Public Works, the town engineer actually go, goes out and inspects everything and makes sure that everything's up to, up to par and meets all the requirements that have been established for that particular development before it gets finally recommended to, for acceptance at the town meeting. So this is a right-up-to-the-last-minute type change or, or recommendation. And at this point in time, we have no, we see, we see no indication that it will be anything but recommended at this time. So Article 23 is water. So Article 23 is water system improvements. This will be a borrowing authorization for the Water and Sewer Department, so Water Sewer Commission, asking for several different improvements totaling $11 million. And this will allow the Commission to borrow that amount to do work that will actually put together a new, plans for a new water, construct, actually, a new raw water main from the well field at Sprague Road to the Warren McKay Treatment Plant at Witch Pond, to reconstruct wells 5, 6, and 7 at Sprague Road, to install a new 12-inch water main along North Street from Beach Street to Ashcroft Road, including transfer of existing water services and main connections along North Street, and to reconstruct wells 9 and 10 at Lamson Road, including all testing, engineering, design specifications, contract documents, permitting, construction and construction administration costs relating there to, and to meet appropriations, would authorize the town treasurer to borrow said amount of $11 million. So this will be presented by the Water Department at the town meeting with anybody, unless there, if there are any questions, they will be addressed by the Water Department at that time. Article 24 is our annual amendment to the sewer service area map. And there are several areas, several locations being recommended for inclusion in the sewer service map, and they are listed in the warrant itself, so I will not dispose with any further description of those, but they are clearly described in, on page 28 of the warrant and under Article 24. And then Article 25 and 26, Mike, you want to take those?
Sure. So Barney and I are sharing a book here. So Article 25 is a modification of Zone 2 aquifer protection map. And basically, it's one person who's asking to not be included in that, but I'll read it to you. It's to see if the town will vote to amend Section 9.43 and Attachment 5 of Chapter 275 of the Town of Foxborough Code, replacing the current Water Resource Protection Overlay District map entitled, and it gives the entire title there, with a new map. And what that does, this is sponsored by the Water Department, part of the Department of Public Works. There is, there's one property that was included in the original map. The property owner has asked not to be included in the map, and it turns out that it was appropriate not to be included in there. So that's one minor change, it was appropriate. And then Article 26 is an article that was, that was, is sponsored by the Board of Health, and it pertains to adult-only retail tobacco stores. So this is for a store that deals primarily with the sale of tobacco and tobacco products. And the other things are, let's see.
I think also would cover vaping products.
Vaping products. Et cetera.
It's the newest product that's being regulated by cities and towns.
Right. So that's the primary sale or resale use in those establishments, not for places that tobacco sale is merely incidental. So a place that sells all kinds of things and also sells tobacco products, that's not what Article 26 pertains to. This is adult-only, so age 21 and over establishments, of which there are none currently in the Town of Foxborough. What this Article 26 aims to do is to restrict the permitting of these establishments into the S-1 District, which would be down in an area of Route 1. So that's what that does. Again, adult-only retail tobacco stores.
Great. All right, so I think that covers the warrant in total. We've covered 26 articles this morning. Again, this was purely for informational purposes for folks, so that they can have an understanding as to what you can expect to see next week at the town meeting, again, at 7:30 at the high school. We encourage all local residents to, registered voters, to attend and exercise your right to participate in the local government. The one thing that we came, that came out of the discussion the other night with the Board of Selectmen, which I thought was actually quite helpful, and something I've experienced in other communities that I've worked in, is that there was actually a session, what was known as like a pre-town meeting, which will allow the community to go over the articles in anticipation of the meeting on town meeting and the actual town meeting date. And what that does is sort of educate everyone who doesn't have the opportunity to go to every meeting of the advisory committee or to have all the information that they need in order to vote at the meeting on the actual date, to give them some additional backup information, have further explanation provided to them, and not necessarily hold up the town meeting itself. So we certainly encourage people to know and to come to the meeting and to be educated as much as possible, but this would be sort of like a formal educational session that would allow us the ability to do that. And so that's been, that's been discussed at the, was discussed at the last Selectmen's meeting. And so we'll look at that further because I think there actually is some value to that. I found it valuable in the previous communities that I've worked in, and it's really helpful for voters to understand the issues and to come to the meeting fully prepared. Clearly, not everybody can do that because it's the time commitment to do that, but certainly, it's another opportunity to be educated on the issues as they, as they come before folks for consideration who vote.
I think another opportunity is, I'm sure there'll be handouts
Sure.
As people come into the high school. I know that the Billboard Advisory Committee has
Yeah.
Prepared a report
Yeah.
Which does summarize what we're doing.
Sure.
And I think it's appropriate for people to read those, and hopefully, those will answer some of the questions that people will have.
Yeah, I think it's always helpful to have more information. More is better. The challenge is that it's sort of like, there's a lot of information coming to folks in one night, and the extent that we, it's just like, there's only two opportunities a year where we have these meetings, the town meetings, and it's the legislative session of the year, if you will, for the town. And it's a lot of information for one night, so obviously, the more we can get to folks ahead of time, the better, the better it is for everybody.
Right. In last week's Board of Selectmen meeting, that was an interesting, albeit long, but productive meeting, and the pre-town meeting that Bill just referred to actually spurred out of a question from a citizen who came up and said it would be nice to have more of this information earlier and some discussion.
Great.
And while she didn't specifically ask for a pre-town meeting, Bill and others talked about where that may be helpful, and it seemed to gain some favor in the room, so certainly would there be some future dialogue.
Yeah, I think more information is better. I think that in a world where we live today, where there was a little bit of mistrust of government in general, and it's unfortunate because I don't believe there's any need for that here in Foxborough, because I think folks here are very genuine in their attempts to try and do things. But it gets, it does spill over into local government. I think that the more we can, information we can provide to people, the better it is, and it gains further trust and the ability for us to do our jobs and for folks to vote on things at the town meeting when it comes up.
Yeah.
So I want to thank both of you.
Thank you.
It's been very, very helpful.
You're welcome.
For me, and I hope it's been helpful for our listening audience, that we've provided enough information for them to go to the meeting and to be educated somewhat more on the articles that were going to be before them. Again, on the, it'll be on May 13th at the Foxborough High School, and starting at 7:30, I hope we'll see everybody there.
Thanks for having us here, Bill.
Thank you.
All right. Thanks again for joining us. This puts a wrap on today's show. I want to thank everybody for joining us on here, on this, another session of Ask the Bill Keegan Show. We'll see you next time.